It's wonderful.
This is good. Thank you very much, very much. I don't think we're going to get any questions. We should get this. Thank you. Captain. Thank you. Who's next? Mission Park.
Good evening.
Favorite school. Thank you.
Careful, the rest of the audience will be worried about that.
Yeah.
Okay, so good evening to the board members, Superintendent Martinez and other members of the audience. I want to start by saying I'm Jennifer Zanzo from Mission Park, and I do have my new vice principal in the audience, Kelly Hendricks. I have, there you go, at least one staff member, thank you Mrs. Perez for coming, and a parent. So look at that, I've got the trifecta. Okay. So basically, we'll start with the demographics also, if I can figure out which ones step forward. All right. So we have 66.6 Hispanic and 21% white. That does not total 100%, but everything else is small enough numbers that we have diversity at our school. The numbers that are in yellow should be kind of the numbers that generate income for us. We are fortunate this year that we have a little bit more budget than Mission Park is used to having because we now have more English learners, 48, almost 49% low income, and we do, last year we only had one foster child and one homeless, like dedicated on the computer, but we're very aware that there are other people who live with other families, they just are temporarily moving. Most of them are planning to buy permanent homes, so they don't want to be classified as homeless, but we have a few more this year than last year. But the biggest number on there is the fact that we are 100% capable of achieving and we will. You'll see. So for academic achievements, oh, who knew I did it separately? Okay, we have a part-time intervention teacher who works with both fifth and sixth grade students that are struggling, and then a core of first grade strugglers. Our instructional aids tend to focus on the second grade classes and those terrible word combination classes. We try to support to the best of our ability and have our strongest aid supporting the teachers there. And we also have a science lab aid that we believe helps front load the vocabulary for our English learners. We try to make sure that every student in the school participates in experimental science lessons by the end of the year. Right now, first and kinder aren't going until they've learned a little bit about procedures, but they'll go later. And then we have a homework club by parent request and English learner focused, but we hope in the fall, we start with our intervention kids and do the English learner focus, and by the spring, we want to add an enrichment focus because we have a high population that Culture and climate, we think this is a huge strength area of Mission Park. We have the best PBIS team ever, and I, I'm sorry, I'm offending other people in the audience, but this is my dream team. We believe it takes a team to make the dream work, and they really push attendance incentives. Right now, we're having a stay all day and play incentive. We're trying to point out to parents that when you go to your job, you don't drift in 15 minutes late, nor do you leave early on a regular basis. So school should be considered your student's job, and we appreciate it. If they are staying all day, then there will be a reward day that they get to play. We don't tell them when it's coming to make sure they're all there every day until then. We have an athletic club with, that's parent volunteers that actually come on Fridays to try and help keep the environment on the playground safe and secure. They run games, and these are parents that have full-time jobs and come to do this on a Friday, just because. We love our PBIS brochures and signage. The bottom picture on the left is a picture of our brochure that goes out, and it's a colored brochure that goes out every year with new students. Last year, we sent it to everybody. This year, we only send it to the kindergartners and new enrollees, but it really tells what our behavior plan is. And we are proud of, the art teacher gives kids a reason to come to school, and the conflict managers are the kids on the yard helping model and keep things safe. We are thrilled with our parent community outreach. Our PTA parents, let's see if I can make this, leaves or works, see that? Those are parents that are leading exercises that are Drag-a-thon. They come every year and they organize a skit. You would have been able to see me as the evil Eminem that day. I wanted to be a watermelon. I really think I could have been a good one. Didn't happen. And we have people who are fundraising non-stop. They, the PTA trains our room parents. We truly have a core of room parents, and they train them. They teach them how to start the science camp fundraising for both fifth and sixth grade. We have a cookie dough fundraiser that, in spite of what the city council and all the news people said, fireworks was not my biggest fundraiser last year, cookie dough was. So anybody who would like cookie dough, I could probably still get you some when it's delivered October 14. We also are thrilled because if you look at that beautiful lab, that is our System 44 mini lab because we had a connection at CSUMV that supported us and donated enough to fully outfit our computer lab last year. We started with a PTA donation and then went with the CSUMV one, and then had 14 extra computers that we could put in the System 44 room. And now they're going to donate some digital cameras. We hope that maybe one of our enrichment classes could be photography or yearbook type stuff. And we also have a good connection right now. We've got the BikeSmart people coming in to do bike safety with Get Free. We've gone to the Opera. We have DJ Frank who comes for every event, and we're just blessed by the number of people we work with every year. So our mission is to encourage and inspire students who are respectful, responsible, lifelong learners that are college and career ready. We keep it short and sweet so we can all remember it, and we hope that the kids are seeing the feeling of love in the library by the people who put in extra hours making the library beautiful. The health aide who gives her extra time after school and just stays till she's taking home a granddaughter later. The sports teams like others. You know that sports make kids want to come to school. It made me want to quit being a principal to try and organize four sports teams, but I got better this year, and the kids are all duly enrolled, and I think it's going to be a great year. So, questions?
Very much. Good, thank you. We're going to go now into action items, and we'll start with curriculum. This is the resolution 2015-16. Instructional materials compliance. This is the one we had the public hearing on, and now we're down to an action item.
Thank you, Superintendent Board Members. It gives me great pleasure this evening to come before you, asking you to pass this resolution. We heard in the public hearing that there were no incidents of students being without textbooks. We have at our IMC no outstanding request for materials. So I truly, truly am grateful to say that all students have all books in their hands. But I do want to give out some thanks this evening. This year, we now have a full-time IMC clerk, and having someone work eight hours a day focused on that has really assisted. We also had a great crew that came in and worked overtime, part-time during the summer to help us with inventory. And then, last but not least, we had Terry Ryan in maintenance do some research for us and discovered a tagging project. So all, over the summer, all of our current textbooks and then new ones that we ordered were tagged, so we can now really maintain an inventory. Now that all books are in hand with students' art, IMC clerk is going to decide over the next two weeks to organize their individual inventories. There's a lot of books, a lot of book rooms, and it's taken a while, but we've got a handle on it. So I'm happy to be here, and I'm happy to read this resolution for your considerations. Resolution number 2015-16-01, sufficiency of instructional materials compliance, 2015-16 school year. Whereas the governing board of Salinas City Elementary School District, in order to comply with the requirements of Education Code 601-19, held a public hearing on September 14, 2015, at 6:30 p.m., which is prior before the eighth week of school, which did not take place during or immediately following school hours. Whereas the governing board provided at least 10 days notice in the public hearing posted in at least three public places within the district that stated the time, place, and purpose of the hearing. Whereas the governing board encouraged participation by parents, teachers, members of the community, and bargaining unit leaders in the public hearing. Whereas information provided at the public hearing into the governing board of the public meeting detailed the extent to which textbooks and instructional materials were provided to all students, including English learners in the district. And whereas the definition of sufficient textbooks or instructional materials means that each student, including English learners, has a textbook or instructional materials or both to use in class and to take home. And whereas between 2008-09 through the 2015-16 fiscal years, the definition of sufficient textbooks or instructional materials also means that all students who are enrolled in the same course within the Salinas City Elementary School District Monetary Accounting Office of Education have standards-aligned textbooks or instructional materials from the same adoption cycle. And whereas sufficient textbooks and instructional materials were provided to each student, including English learners, that are aligned to the academic content standards and consistent with the cycles and content of the curriculum frameworks in the following subjects: mathematics, Eureka Math, copyright 2015; English, Engage New York, copyright 2014; Spanish; science, McMillan-Lagawatt Hill, California Science, K-6; history/social science, Scott Forisman, History/social Science, California, K-5; and Prentice-Hall, Ancient Civilizations, 6th grade; English Language Arts, Cooten Mifflin, Legacy of Literature, K-6. Whereas sufficient textbooks or instructional materials were provided to each student enrolled in the foreign language or health classes. And therefore, it is resolved that for the 2015-2016 school year, Salinas City Elementary School District has provided each student in each school with sufficient textbooks and instructional materials aligned to the academic content standards and consistent with the cycles and content of the curriculum frameworks. Questions?
Do you have any questions?
I hope this year is better than last year. After we passed this, we found out there were multiple schools, multiple kids, or without textbooks. Let's hope.
Is that a question?
No, that was a comment.
Ms. Barnes, you're next.
I do have a question. But now that they're being tagged, though, what's the policy to make sure that the students return them, and what's the consequence if they don't, if they lose them?
That is, now that they're tagged, I will tell you that we know that each student has one, but they aren't tagged by a code number or assigned to a student. So a student would report it missing, and they would be charged with a replacement cost. Of course, if the student couldn't make that cost, the replacement cost, then other arrangements would be gained.
Okay, because I know that's a big issue. We have millions of dollars of books that disappear, so we make an attempt to retrieve them.
Oh, yes, at all sites. They do make an attempt. But we do not have, like they do in the high school, a system where individual books are essentially checked out by individual students. That does, of course, make, it's possible when you're dealing with seventh through 12th graders, but when you're dealing with kindergartners through sixth graders, it's problematic.
Will there be any orientation for the parents before the books are distributed?
The books have already been distributed. Students have all the books in their hands right now.
There are check-in balances, that type of program?
We know that all students have them, and so as they lose them, that's brought to the teacher's attention. And then generally speaking, we try to work with the student to locate it. I know as a principal and as a teacher, call parents and then try to see if the, as I said, the child could, the parents could cover a replacement cost.
What's the going rate?
It really, really depends. Some of our books, we have consumables, that would vary $20 to $25, but if you're looking at a language arts textbook or a science textbook, it's more under range of $60 to $75.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, board? Any questions from the public at all about this item? Say none, okay. We're going to get a roll call vote on this one. Motion.
I move we approve Resolution 2015-16-01, sufficiency of instructional materials compliance.
There's a motion on the floor?
Second.
Second, and Ms. Barnes, any conversation or any comments?
It's a resolution. It wasn't a roll call.
Roll call. We just call it. So what, what was the question?
It was a roll call.
Roll call vote? Yeah. All those, I mean, yeah, go ahead.
Amy Morrison.
Oh, oh, yes.
Steven Kim.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
And Ms. Barnes.
Yes, yes. Five zero on the item, Resolution 2015-16-01. Okay. There's going to be the next one, action item for... This is a resolution on the government. Limited. Okay. Mr. Stratt. Yes, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President, board members, Superintendent Martinez, first of five action items tonight. The GAN limit is somewhat dated. It was formed in 1979. The intent of the GAN limit was for all public entities to be able to control their growth and not have a budget that was extraordinarily higher than the inflation rate or than the revenues generated. In our case, our revenue limit at the time. It's outdated. It's, it's an annual requirement that we reported, and we are hereby reporting it. And it does include a resolution, which I'd like to read, and then a roll call vote. Resolution 2015-16-03, resolution of the Board of Trustees of the Salinas and City Elementary School District for establishing the GAN limit. Whereas in November of 1979, the California electorate did adopt Proposition 4, commonly called the GAN Amendment, which added Article 13B to the California Constitution. And whereas the provisions of that article establish maximum appropriation limitations, commonly called GAN limits, for public agencies, including school districts. And whereas the district must establish a revised GAN limit for the 2014-15 fiscal year and a projected GAN limit for the 2015-16 fiscal year in accordance with the provisions of Article 13B and applicable statutory law. Whereas Government Code Section 790.1 provides that school districts may increase their GAN limits under specified circumstances. Now therefore be it resolved that this board does provide public notice that the attached calculations and documentation of the GAN limits for the 2014-15 and 2015-16 fiscal years are made in accordance with applicable constitutional statutory law. And be it further resolved that this board does provide public notice that the attached calculations and documentation of the GAN limits for 2013-14 and 2014-15 fiscal years include an increase of $760,071 for the 2014-15 GAN limit pursuant to the provisions of Government Code Section 790.1. And there, and be it further resolved that the superintendent notifies the Director of the State Department of Finance of the increase of the 2015-16 GAN limit. Be it further resolved that this board does hereby declare that the appropriations in the budget for the 2014-15 and 2015-16 fiscal years do not exceed the limitations imposed by Proposition 4. And be it further resolved that the superintendent provides copies of this resolution along with the appropriate attachments to the interested citizens of this district. Board of Education takes the following action. And I would tell you, the attachment does certify that we are within the GAN limit. We are not in violation of the GAN limit increase.
Motion to approve Resolution number 2015-16-03.
There is a motion, there is a second?
Before, before there's a second, though, I have a question. Can you please clarify exactly how the calculation occurs? Because I understand that it has to do with your per capita personal income and ADA, and then, and if, how do we actually explain how we need it to be increased? I mean, how do we, how do we justify that?
The calculation is made, I can defer to my Controller, Lona Christensen, for any details, but we get a form that is preloaded with how the calculation occurs. So we get an additional credit for additional ADA, for an increase in ADA, that does not go against the GAN limit. So they take a picture of the increased size of the district, and then they increase spending per capita, if you will, to determine that we are not in violation of the GAN limit. But it's a... Lona, would you like to add anything to that or not?
No, I have a real nice fiscal report from School Services that explains it. If you'd like to have a copy of that.
Okay, so I'll second that motion.
There's a motion and second on that on the floor. Any discussion? Any comments? Are there any persons out here have a public, this is a roll call.
Would you like to take a roll call?
Yes. Go ahead. Yes.
Foster Hopkin.
Yes.
Steven Kim.
Aye.
Nathan Morrison.
Yes.
And Jennifer Horns.
Okay. So done. Another item. Mr. Stratt. I'm going into the item of the unaudited actual report.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I'd like to compliment Lona Christensen, Controller, on spending endless hours putting together our unaudited actuals as we closed out the previous fiscal year. And if we have just a short presentation, then it'll tell you the highlights of it. The budget is, spend time reading all the details of it. And it starts with the end almost, because it's the end of the year. It ended June 30th, but we've still got a few things to do. Yep. First one is going to be, give the statement work, right? So it's our record of what we did this past year. The annual audit comes and looks at what we did, in our words, and validates that. And the annual auditors will be here starting next Monday for three days, and then go back and crunch all of those numbers, subsequently offer a report by 15 December to CDE and to the county, and they'll be back to review in January of the results of the audit, at which time they'll be audited actuals.
No? That's it?
No, that's, let's find out which way it's going to go here again. There we go. This is just, this captures a couple of highlights. You'll note that our revenues that were estimated at second interim were $86.44 million, and they ended up being $83.92 million. Now that would cause some concern, except the truth is, the $2.4 million difference was due to a, we're not going to call it a gimmick. It's an accounting technique that the state uses. We applied for this money in 2008. We got the money last fall. It's in our checking account, and we used it, or we are using it for emergency repair projects. But we don't get credit for even having it, even though we have it, until after we close out the projects, and then we move the dollars over to reflect that we got them. I didn't say it was a gimmick, well. The state does these crazy things. Our expenses are about on target, and at the bottom line, what you'll know is, even though we have less than we thought, we still are not deficit spending. Some conclusions, if you will. We changed gimmick to CDE ERP accounting is unique. Our expenditures are right on. We think we did, we got, we captured those very well through the year. We, we didn't spend quite as much because we hired people later, and we hired people who were less senior or didn't have all the dependents, so there's some delta there, and that'll, that'll be reflected in the audited actuals also. The report you have says that we have to take the categoricals and show zero balance until everything's closed out, and then that will change. So even though you'll see changes in January, it's not a discrepancy from now, it's what we have to report. And what would you say, Lona? We acted responsibly, we did a good job with the budget.
Yeah.
You got it all captured, and we're here to do it again.
Our audit was held for sure. If I missed anything, but it's very common to have big differences between your estimated actuals and your unaudited actuals because of the requirement we have to show all categorical resources completely spent, even though we're not going to spend them all, and we legally don't have to. The only one with a limit is Title I. We're allowed a, just a limited percentage carryover on that. And now with the, with the LCAP supplemental and concentration funds, in order to reserve that money, we also have to show that all spent, but like in this case, where you couldn't even get enough people hired, you know, it didn't get all spent. I just wanted to say a little bit more about that ERP money. That caught me off guard. There's two types of funding. There's grants, and there's entitlements. And you almost have all your federal resources are almost all grants, and they say, you do not actually recognize this as revenue until you have spent it. You have to earn it first by spending it. And state money is almost all entitlements. You're going to get it regardless. I mean, there are rules, but you can show at the bottom line, I have this much left over. The only thing that happened was that $2.4 million, it got moved from your revenue opti-codes up here at the top where you can see it, down to a general ledger number 9650. It hasn't gone away, it's in a new place, and so that's why it looks like there's a big discrepancy there, but it's still, the money is there. Okay, it's there for spending issues.
Any questions?
None? Okay.
It is an action item.
An action item. This is on 2014-15 unauditable actual report, that's the report itself. That's the second, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, go ahead. Motion. Motion to approve 2014-15 unaudited actual report.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor, and second, Ms. Barnes. Any discussion? There's none? This is a roll, this is not roll call. Not roll call?
No.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's five zero right there. Thank you.
I would just like to commend our business department, specifically Lona, for all of those hard weekends, evening hours. She's here all the time, and I know I can depend on you to give us the best accuracy around our budget numbers, information that I'm questioning on, and I have questions on, so I just really want to commend you for your work. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Stratt.
Thank you. Thank you. So how about going on? Let's see, Prop 30, this is the EPA, EPA as presented, it's the Educational Protection Account Spending Plan Update.
Mr. President, board members, Superintendent Martinez.
Yes, sir.
Before you, for this action item, required.
Okay.
And basically, the intent of Prop 30 was to create a bridge during the huge deficit period in the California budget. It will sunset, we're still good for this year, and there are limitations on what we can spend the money for. We take all the money and we put it into certificated salaries, and we stay honest that way. We report that to the state without exception. At this point, you can see that the fiscal impact is we have $11.809 million this year that goes for future staffing.
Motion to approve Education Protection Account Spending Plan Update.
There's a motion on the floor?
Second.
With the second, Foster. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's a five zero here.
Thank you. Great job.
Mr. Stratt, you got another? This is a digital schools contract for services. The item. Go ahead.
Thank you very much. Again, I'm before you to recommend approval of the digital schools contract for services. Digital schools does our position control, EWA's, extra work agreements, and school business agreements. They provide the basis of the financial system that we integrate with the escape system to manage our district finances.
What are we going to do about that? What is, what is our curriculum and instruction? And are we going to put in place as a result of what we're seeing upon that summative assessment? I would suggest that we might want to extend that from 5:30 to 7:00. I think it's going to be really difficult to do that within one hour. Is that my recommendation?
That's fine.
Do you need a motion?
Do you need a motion? I think so. It's just a study session, yes?
Just number at the end, I think.
Okay. So, we're making that from 5:30 to 7:00 PM.
7:00 PM with...
It will be smarter balance assessment result analysis, followed by the curriculum and instruction step, next steps to address those needs.
Okay. We agree to that, 5:30 to 7:00 PM. And do we have a location to be here?
Always.
Always? Always? We're now adjourned. Okay? Adjourned. Thank you very much for your patience and your information, and also for your willingness to contribute.
She will.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.